Good morning, everyone. I've got 10 o'clock and I'm so delighted to be able to welcome you to this Paulding County Board of Commissioners meeting on February the 8th, our work session meeting. And I'd like to welcome our elected officials. Sheriff Gary Gellidge is here with us. And City Councilperson Doris Devie is with us here. So I don't see any others. Is Frank hiding? I can't see him. He's so little. There he is. That handsome guy back there. Frank Moran. Sorry, I really didn't see you. Reminder. As you can see, I need a lot of help. So I think we've got everybody covered now. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to ask the marshal, Rodney, if you'd bring that list for it, anyone wishing to speak. And if you do have your mobile device on, good time to turn it off. Thank you. As is our tradition, stand if you will, and we'll have our invocation and our pledge.
Tony Fosse, thank you for this day that you've given us. It's a gift, and we wouldn't take it for granted. And we would like to be God-centered in the day. I'm reminded of the Psalm that says, "Your ways are higher than our ways. Your thoughts are higher than our thoughts." And we would seek as a board, as a staff, as a people, to be inside of your ways and follow the guidance and the wisdom that you can give us. So we pray for that today. Thank you for our law enforcement and our first responders. Thank you so much for our staff. Just thank you for our people. We live in a great county with great interest and friendships that abound. Pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The January 25th, 2022 work session minutes and the January 25th, 2022 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, our Team Paulding piece this morning is on the February Employee of the Month. So let's enjoy that together.
I'm Chris Robinson. I'm the Planning and Zoning Manager for Paulding County under the Community Development Department. We all nominated Leah. It was a discussion within all the other members of the Division and Department of Community Development of just how comfortable you are around her. That is a calming effect. She is the most wonderful employee. She is heartfelt. She's so organized and willing to help everyone in community development, even across all the other departments. She's been with the county longer than Planning and Zoning. She's been with Planning and Zoning right about two years now. She handles all the zoning applications, land use applications. She schedules all the times for comments to come in on these applications. There's a lot of dynamics with legal notices, timings, and she's just right on top of it. You know, our thing over at Planning and Zoning, "Help us, help you," and she is number one at it. I think of her a whole lot more than just being an employee right there. She's a friend. She's family. We're all family over there. She's right there in the middle of us.
Congratulations, Leah. Good job in presenting that. Reports from committees and departments. Ms. Tabitha Pollard, our Finance Director, is going to give us a mid-year review here. Thank you, Tabitha.
Thank you. That was a hard act to follow, but at least it's a positive message. So hopefully we can do it justice. So every year, we go through, our year ends June 30th. Then we've prepared our budget. Budget's adopted in August. And interest is where we are mid-year. So our revenue's still coming in, where are expenditures? So today, we're going to look at through December. But to get started on that, I think you've got to understand where we started the year at. So how exactly did we end the year June 30th? Most of you know, we go through an auditing process. So that starts in August, September, and lasts, for the most part, through mid-December. So what I have prepared today is an update as to how we ended the year last year, as well as how we have progressed from July until through December. If you wanted more information, we've put together the annual comprehensive finance report. It's this report, but the link is here. I tried to bounce back and forth, and it kind of disrupts the presentations. So for the sake of time, I'm not going to do that. But you can go to paulding.gov, and under Finance, there's documents, and there's several years of financial reports out there. Specifically today, I want to talk about a couple of revenues that have been increasing over time. We very conservatively increased those last year, and they are progressing at a higher rate than what we had forecasted, those revenues. So that's one great thing about a forecast. It's going to be wrong. It's just, how is it going to be wrong? So we have the title of the lawroom. Those are vehicle sales. So when you purchase a vehicle, you pay title of lawroom tax. And that has continued to increase. There are a couple of factors: the economy, interest rates. You know, everything's got a little bit of a risk to it. So we want to make sure that we're cognizant of those risks that are out there. Prior year, that being the 2021 budget, we had $7 million budgeted. That came in at 10.8 million. In 2022, we had 9 million, and it looks like we're going to wind up with about 11.5. So that would be your budget that you would go forward with for the 2023, as we gear up to prepare for that 2023 budget. Another increased revenue is the local option sales tax. And we'll look at these month to month in a graph in a moment. But so prior year, 2021, we had 16 million. It came in at 20.7 million. We conservatively increased that because we didn't know exactly what was feeding that increase. So it came in at 19, or 2022 budget's 19.5 million. And we should end the year about 22.5 million. Intangible recording tax, those are property sales, same kind of thing. Inspection fees or permits. We've actually seen a large reduction last year. Maybe supply chains impacted that. So those have kind of dropped off a little bit this year. And we'll see how those end up. But that's what it's progressing as of December. Title of the lawroom tax, let's see. This blue is your, let's see if I can find my pen pointer. The blue is the current year. So that's 2022. I have estimated out for the rest of the year. So again, that forecast will be a little bit different, and it's probably maybe a little conservative if you look at last year's numbers. But there are a lot of factors that are driving that, of course. Sales tax revenues. So our sales tax revenues, again, in blue. We've had a couple of things happen over the past couple of years. If you look at this in green, May 2020, we had online sales that caused a spike in sales tax. And then if you go back to July, the number's in red, I mean, the color's in red for 2021. So it's continuing to progress. And then in 2021, one of the big things that was different was Costco opened. So we see a spike in the revenues. And then if you look at the blue, you can see that continuing. So we're a little more secure in those lost sales tax that are going to be collected. So we can budget those going into next year, not quite as conservatively, assuming that there's a little bit of risk. But they're more like reality now. Expenditures. So last year, 2021, we had budgeted expenditures of 82.3 million. Our final budget was 89.4 million, and we actually came in at 72.4 million. So one would ask, you know, what's the difference in that? Why would the, why is your actual so much less? We had obligations of 9.9 million. So what happens is those expenditures were obligated in 2021. They rolled into 2022. And that becomes apparent if you look at this original budget of 88.5 million, and your final's 98.5 million. The difference between those two is this 9.9, because those were obligated. So currently, as of December, we had spent 46.8 million, and as of December last year was 37 million. Again, this 9.9 is feeding that December number. So your budgets are on track. If you wanted to go and find out more about the budget, you could look at the budget document for 2022. And again, that's at paulding.gov/finance. See if I can get off of that. It's not going to do it. In the back, I had, and I've handed out the budget report. I apologize. It's small. I tried to adjust the size of the font, and it didn't adjust very well. But for Januaries, I will have it adjusted so that it's a little more legible. So I'm going to put it up on the screen for December. And revenues are, most of your revenues are collected before December. So you don't have quite as many collections from January to June. You do have charges for services, a few things, but not, all of your property taxes are collected. Your other taxes, many of those are collected. Lost obviously comes in every month. Your title of lawroom tax comes in every month. So those are the big ones. Charges for services comes in. Fines and forfeitures, those are a little bit below budget. When you get down to your expenditures, most of your expenditure should be around 50% at that time. In some cases, timing makes them go up. So if you have a one-time purchase or a maintenance cost or something like that, it'd make the budget go up a little over 50% in some departments. But that's just because they won't incur that cost for the next year. So I'm going to turn down, I mean, I'm going to flip over to page six, which is the end of the general And if you look at this line here, this total expenditures, that's just a recap of what I had shown in the graph earlier, showing that the 88.6 million for original budget, 98.6 million for the amended. Again, that's, those are your encumbrances that had come into, from 2021 into 2022, and our actual expenses. So overall, we're right on track. Other than, we have a few revenues that will help us in preparing our budget as we get ready to go into fiscal year 2023. And behind this, you have fire tax, you have debt service, and you have water and sewer and landfill. So for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through those. But if you have any questions, then I'll be glad to address.
Any questions? Thank you, Tabitha. You know, we've talked about it quite a bit, and I'm sure we'll talk more. I'm blessed to have a lovely assistant, Ms. Angela Ferris, and she's now going to pass out the test of what was just briefed. Seriously, we have another report from Ms. Lori Ashmore, the Water System Director. So it's going to give us a project update. Always a lot going on in that department.
Good morning. There we go. Just a few updates. We've got a lot of new projects starting this year, and wanted to give you, and I'm pleased to be able to have an opportunity to give you an update on those. And I'll try and weave some status on some of the operation as we go. The first project is, you know, we always started with Richland Creek when we talk about project updates. Well, we're going to continue on that water trend. We are currently supplying 66% of the county's water needs from Richland Creek Reservoir. The next project is being able to, it will increase that ability to transport water to areas presently unserved by the county. We're currently soliciting proposals for a progressive design build, and those proposals are due on February 25th. They are for a project to connect our transmission main on Highway 61 over to the 92 corridor. And as we refer to it, it's that northeast transmission main loop. Very pleased to have that on the street. Our project completion date for that is December of '23. Our copper mine expansion, okay, we're finally there. We're about ready to put that on the street. The design is complete. We're confirming that all the language for contracting has been incorporated in the bid documents, and we'll be forwarding those to procurement this week. And that project has an 18-month construction window. The pumpkin vine WRF improvements is one of our next projects that will be coming out. The initial project is for addressing the bottlenecks that are suppressing our ability to move flow through that plant. And we are scoping and developing the RFP for that project We're also working on biosolids. We're currently producing an unclassified sludge. And it's taken to a landfill. Right now, it's being taken to a landfill in Taylor County. Landfills are now limited on the amount of sludge that they can accept, and this is driving an industry-wide issue with these, with our sludges. So our goal on this project is to create a Class A biosolids that can have a beneficial use, possibly as a soil amendment, or land applied, or could even be used as cover material in a landfill. There are a variety of methods of treating these solids: composting, drying, incinerating. And some of the treatment methods are better, are adapted for certain ways of disposing of that sludge. So real important is where are we going with that sludge. So we're working on that scope and an RFP for that that will come out this year. We have a wastewater master plan project that is intended to update our master plan for the collection system, address the future treatment and disposal needs, and provide a calibrated model of the sewer system. This basically, the picture on the upper right shows that, on the three screens, we've got our mapping of the system, the GIS, and our flow monitoring that is being done. And this master plan will actually consolidate a lot of that data into what do we need for the future. We received two proposals last week from teams of consultants. We had, each one of them has two or more engineering firms on their team. And we have an interdisciplinary team from the water system, community development, and economic development, and finance reviewing the proposals. We may be conducting interviews following the review of the proposals. Our water main extensions, we've got two public meetings set up for our engineers to talk individually with the people who will be impacted by this water, by these water lines. At Burnt Hickory Park, for the school road water extension on the 16th, and for Buchanan Highway on the 21st of this month. And we're going to borrow Mulberry Rock Park for that one. We'll be working with the customers to establish where they want their water meter, so those get on the plans before they go out to bid. And then we'll be ready for bidding those projects. The State Route 92 relocation on the north side, from Burnt Hickory Road to Cobb County, those plans have been completed for the relocation of 6- to 20-inch pipe. It's about a mile long. And our engineer on that project is Atkins, and they're currently taking those plans and getting a bid package together that we can put on the street. And just for reference, the GDOT bid schedule is for March of '22. Last fall, you authorized our participation in the low-income household water assistance program. And that is the one where the eligibility for the program is administered by Talatuna CAP. And I just wanted to give you an update, because as of this morning, we have 63 low-income households that have been assisted by this program, and we have posted $11,500 to their accounts. This is, they have just entered the last stage of this program, where they've addressed the people who had been cut off or who were at risk of getting cut off. They opened the program in January for senior citizens, and we also, and other households. And beginning in February, they've opened it up to general public. So we saw, we actually saw a marked increase in our numbers just in the last week. But it is helping. It's getting people, service reestablished, or keeping them from getting disconnected. And that's all I have for you this morning. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So Lori, just, you know, people don't really understand. Sometimes they think when they flush a toilet, it just disappears. And that's not what happens. A lot goes from point A to point B. But just as far as the biosolids piece that you talked about, me and you've worked on this a lot, talked about this a lot, and it's a big issue because of the cost of, what it's costing this county now. And going to Taylor County comparing to, it used to be Grady Road, which was 30 miles down the road. Taylor's 150 miles down the road. Transportation cost is tremendous. So very glad to see this, whatever we come up with, the fix is. I mean, I know dryers and composting and stuff like that is options. And, you know, so thank you for you and your team that has been working on this, because I know y'all had a meeting on it, what, two years ago, year and a half, two years ago, when it really started. Don't realize really what happened. And it was a drastic blow. It just came out of nowhere, really, when the state impacted us like that. So anyway, thank you for your team. And another thing, all this water that I'm letting y'all have out of post four, y'all need to send a thank you or something. You know what I mean?
Lori, I was going to get you to update Macklin Road, State Route 360. Are all the utilities in combination with that project, are they still standing by, or are they already done?
Work is still ongoing. We have an inspector on that project. They've done a lot of the work to date, but we still have a lot of coordination with the road contractor.
The next item on the agenda is our public participation on agenda items. For those of you that are familiar, there's also a place at the end for public participation on non-agenda items. And we do have a county ordinance that requires the sign up for the non-agenda items. Rebecca, just correct me if I'm wrong. It's Friday at 5:00?
That's right.
So Ms. O'Connor, we do have that requirement. So maybe you can join us the next meeting and get signed up for that, because you're the only person on this list that I'll just take in order here in a minute. But I just wanted to let you know that that's part of the ordinance that we have, or one of the ordinances that we have. So moving into the agenda items, it looks like we've got six additional people, and I'm just going to take them in order. First, we have Paul Taylor. We're glad to have you here, Mr. Taylor. If you'll come forward to the podium. Let you go first, county clerk. She'll tackle you at five minutes.
I know. I am just a common guy who attends most of these meetings, as you probably see me sitting out here in the public. And I understand from the agenda that very shortly we're going to be talking about the draft resolution. Obviously, that's why everybody's here. And the problem that I, not a problem that I have, but this is such an important thing that's going to change and affect everybody in this county, from what I can gather. And it's going to affect us for a long time. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of ramifications that we don't know about. And I think it needs a lot of light. And I don't think we've said that light on this issue, on this topic. Most of the people, I don't know how they found out about it. I have a copy of the resolution, and it's not even back there on the back today for people to gather, to get. So I guess my concern is, such an important issue, I'm concerned about the vision that you folks say we have and the values. But when I look at that board, and I see the word "heart" up there as one of the values, it's said openness. I don't see much openness on this. It was published Friday at 5:00, I think, on the agenda item. And here we are Tuesday, and you're going to vote on it, quote, at 2:00 this afternoon, the way the normal steps go. Talk today, vote this afternoon, I think. But I don't see where the openness, like I said, I don't even see a list or a resolution out there for people to look at. And then you get down to the T part of it, transparency. I don't know. Maybe I missed it, but I don't see a transparency. Like I said, where is the, just a common thing to put it back there for people to look at? Where is it? How are people supposed to find it? And then you look at the way it's worded on the agenda. I don't have it with me. But it's very vague. It doesn't come out and say what the intent is. It just says, "Change government." Well, that could be anything. So we know what it's going to do. We know what you folks want to do with it. And I think it should have been think it should have been more open and more transparent. So what I'd like to see is this board table this resolution. What's the big hurry? To get it out there and vote it on today? What's the hurry? 99.9% of the people, the people outside of this room, don't even know what this is about, and they have a right to know. Because it's going to affect how we do business, as you well know, and it's going to affect how we, it's going to affect our taxes, it's going to affect everything. And here we are, we know nothing about it, other than what people might have found out through their particular organizations. What is this about? Chief Executive Officer, what exactly is that? I mean, we all know what it is, but what exactly is that? What are your roles become? I don't know. We'd like to know. I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I'd just like to see the facts as to what this is going to do. You know, who's, there's going to be, I'm sure there's going to be a tax increase or expenses. Who's going to pay the expenses? The taxpayer, which is always the way it works. So there's a lot of questions that, I don't know if this is the forum that they're going to get answered in or even brought up. But to listen to me for five minutes and five other people for five minutes and call that public input openness to transparency, I think is a little wrong. And I would hope that you would table this until the public has an opportunity to input on something of this magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next on in line is Mr. Jim Tully. Jim, if you'll come up, please. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Jim Tully. I am a resident of the New Hope Community here in Paulding County, 23 years now going. I also am here to speak on Agenda 22-05, excuse me, and not so much on its outcome, but on the unknowns. I understand the policy of publicizing and publishing in the Dallas New Era, which has been done. I understand the posting of the agenda item on the Commission webpage, which has been done. And I also know that we are here under new business to discuss the resolution, which is where it will be introduced. I have no intent of taking my five minutes, this is quick and concise and a clear statement. I believe this amendment and resolution is above the normal day-to-day operations of this Commission. I also believe that you don't take your responsibilities lightly, and I by no means wish to diminish your decisions. But you have taken your time and your energies to investigate this, to put this forth as something that would benefit this county, and I appreciate that. But I beg of you to give me the same opportunity and time to discuss, investigate, and come to my own conclusion. So therefore, I also ask that this Commission table this agenda item and afford myself and the public that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jim. Next, we have Ms. Virginia Galloway, also on 2205. Continue, please come forward. Thank you for being here.
I really didn't want to come here, because I've done this for the last 15 years down at State Capitol, talking about policy and reading through bills and trying to figure out what are the unintended consequences of bills and resolutions and that kind of thing. That's what I did for 15 years. I tried to retire, and that lasted a few months, but went into some business ventures. But look, I have great respect for all of you. I like you. You're good people. I believe that. I think you're smart. I think that you have good intentions. I am concerned about this legislation, because as everyone said before, it was kind of sprung, you know? And yeah, it was in the paper and all that, but people didn't know about it. And somebody called and said, "Do you know about this?" I'm like, "No, they're not doing that without telling anybody." So I looked it up, and here's an agenda item that just has a number on it that doesn't explain a lot. And so then I went to look for the, on the website, for the item, it wasn't there. And I don't think it's still there. It wasn't yesterday, it wasn't there and available for the public. So I'm going to start at the end, I'd usually start at the beginning, but I may run out of my five minutes, so I want to start here. And that is, I believe that best practice is to never present a problem without suggested solutions. And my solution is, several solutions that you could think about, and I would trust you to make the right decision on which of these would be the best. Either table it until it's publicized and a reasonable opportunity for public input is allowed, and changes could be made and publicized as needed, maybe no changes are needed. But maybe they are. It also would be more appropriate for the change that affects the chairman's role to be made closer to the chairman's election year, so potential chairman could assess the job requirements and limitations. Alternately, perhaps, a non-binding question could be put on the Paulding County ballot in November, and then you would know what the people think. Nobody would be intimidated, because they're going to go vote anyway, we hope, and then that would kind of let you know, it would quantify the support for this. Instead of, I mean, maybe I don't represent everybody in the county, I wouldn't claim to, although I did talk, I do want you to know, when I got the resolution, I didn't just say, "Well, let me read this," and see. I did read it. But then I started calling people and asking people who would know, people who had served in elected offices, people in other counties that had county managers. I talked to a lawyer, I talked to a person who majored in government policy, you know, I talked to a lot of people about this. So I have prepared a thing from those comments. All of these are not my opinion, but I've got one for each of you, because I'd like for you to look at it, because I kind of went through line by line. But this is what, kind of my big thing, this is what the document says, that the authority is given to the county manager includes the financial privileges of creating budgets, and I know you have to vote on all this stuff, but creating budgets, allocating budget money, making budgeted purchases for the county up to $50,000 with no approval or bid required exclusively. You know what that word means? It means exclusively. That means the only person, would be the county manager, who can set salaries for almost every county employee and official. That's an important word, and I think you need to look at that word very carefully. Commissioner privileges, preparing the commission meeting agenda, and I know it says "in consultation", but that didn't mean they have to do what you say. Now, I know if they don't enough times, or maybe even once, you could fire them, but firing a county manager is not as easy as it seems. I'm sure you've talked to some other county people about that, maybe not. Also, wielding the exclusive power, again, there's that word, to appoint, remove, that means fire, hire and fire, and fix the compensation of all employees and officials of the county with a very few exceptions. Supervising the official conduct of department heads, all department heads and county employees with a few exceptions. And recommending the department heads and most chief executive officers. And I've got it page by page, I don't know if I have time, but look at page nine and 10 and 13, and that will back up everything that I just said. That's all the power that you're giving away, plus some, that's just, I just gave you the Reader's Digest version. So again, I respect you all, I like you all. This is not a hostile statement. It's a statement, I hope, from friend to friend. Let's do this in a way that is honoring to the community. Again, going, I like that heart thing, that's great. Let's respect, we respect you guys, let's respect the community, let's let everybody have a chance to talk about this and have some input on it. And I will, would like these to become part of the record if we could, and then I've got a copy for each commissioner. Okay? Thank you very much, appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much, Virginia. Next on the list is Ms. Nancy Hollingshed. Thank you for being here, Nancy.
Yeah, I've been kind of missing, I had a knee replacement, so I've been kind of missing the meetings. But my job with the party now is to inform them about what's going on with the Commission. And so when we saw that Friday afternoon, that's when I called and got, well, I emailed Rebecca and got my open record, so we could get a copy of this resolution, because no one had seen it. And thank you, Rebecca, you got it to me very quickly. I appreciate that. So we went through it, I went through it, we went through it, and we thought, well, the only way you can get it to the citizens is to put it on social media. And that's why I put it out on social media everywhere. And so then we started getting calls, and everybody wanted to know more and more about it. So that's that right there, but I know there was a letter that was in response to my, some of my stuff, that said that, there was one part that said that I had lied. I don't lie. I might come back with a different opinion than what you do, but I do not lie. So I just want to set the record straight, I don't lie. Second, because if I'm a Christian, second, if you lived with my grandfather, you would never lie, because he thought there was no one lower than a liar. So anyway, let me give you some of the points that I have. Yes, we're all growing, and we know that, and we know that we may have to do some changes. But we're not Fulton, we're not Cobb, and we're not Douglas County. And there's no, there's nothing out there that says that what they have done is helped their counties to promote them even more. You can also look at Bartow County, which is a sole chairmanship, so, and they are operating pretty well up there. So what that's to be said is that nothing is correct, nothing's written in stone, everything works differently. So, but the thing is, the more we put bureaucrats in charge of what's going on in our county, the more you take it away from the citizen, say, "Voted you guys in or no?" So that's what it's all about. Citizens like to know that they can talk to their commissioners, and that their commissioners are in charge of what they're doing, not that it goes down to a bureaucrat. And we all know what bureaucracy does, you can look at Washington and see how, what a big mess it is. So, but anyway, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. But yes, we do need more transparency. I think that's one of the things in this county right now that lacks a lot at times. I mean, I'm just going to throw one thing out there, we look at the election board moving to the senior center. That's a big thing, that's a great thing. But I think you could have let the seniors know a little bit sooner, and they would not have been as upset as they are. So I want to thank you guys, and you know, I love all you guys, that's what I told you. None of this is personal, I love all of you, and so I just want to thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Nancy. Next in line is Ms. Carol MacLeod. Carol, if you'll come forward, please, thank you for being here.
Good morning, it's so good to see all of you.
Good morning.
You've changed a lot over these two years of COVID, everybody's looking different, new glasses, grayer hair, ball-headed, great hairdo. You're getting a little bald, too.
Can we get the marshal up here?
Thank you for letting me speak this morning on the same subject. I'm here just more for clarification than anything. But I started getting calls, and I was in Charleston, South Carolina, so I had my vacation interrupted a little bit, but I thought it was important enough for me to start doing some research on it myself. And I so appreciate what all of you do and how well you have worked together as a Board of Commission. In the last year, it has just run like a well-oil machine. Yes, there've been some hiccups, there always isn't an organization in a county this large. But I really believe that what you're doing is the right thing. And I did my research as well, because y'all know me, if I'm going to find out something, I'm going to dig deep. And I went through and went to every suggestions from all the counties, and I did my own, I've got 154 counties, some of them did not put their information on the website, but out of the 154, 71 are under the, having a manager for their organizations. And it's not just big counties, it's smaller counties as well. Also, there were 46 that remained as an administrator, and there were several counties that had different terms and names, and I think that's kind of what y'all might be thinking about, I don't know. There were three that had no information out there, and then the rest were just purely the chairman and commission government. I do know that the protocol is, you've done everything the way you're supposed to do, and I appreciate that. I had no problem finding the resolution online, it's just right there in all the archives. And I just think that we need to move forward with it. One of the things, too, that I discovered, and I kept thinking about it, and I thought I had heard about something like this before, but then I remembered that I was speaking at another meeting in April the 11th, 2017. And I noticed that Todd and Vernon were here, are they still here? And I'm pretty, I would think that you're excited that they are moving forward with this, because that was something I think that you guys were doing back then as well, and that got to the legislature and it was not voted to move forward with. Because this is a step, I think, and just clarify me if I'm wrong, and this is where I'm trying to get my answers. So you vote on it as a board to move forward or not move forward or whatever. And then once it's voted on through the board, it has to be, our legislative team has to decide whether we also move forward with it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My other question about this is, this is not done in one swoop, it's like it gets the ball rolling, and once you get the ball rolling, then you have time to do and put all, everything in place, change the job description, is that correct? Or keep the job description as it is? I know there is a, there's, what I read, and I think that's some of the same things that Virginia read, there's a way as a group to be able, as the Commission, to be able to change the verbiage or wordage if you don't have to go directly by what is, what the, I guess, the samples are or what you want to do. Because in talking to some of the, I did some calling too, and found out that every position was kind of different in every county. And it was up to the county commission to make the changes by the, if they wanted to. Is that correct or not? And the position?
I'm going to ask Jason to weigh in. The purpose of the public participation is not necessarily to have a dialogue, but if
Okay, that's fine.
If it's legal.
Ms. MacLeod, I'm going to make some comments when we hit the agenda, and hopefully we'll address that.
Okay, all right. That sounds great, that sounds great. But basically, that's all I have to say, and, you know, we do talk about trust, and I think the voters of this county trusted you when they put you in as our, our commission, our whole commission. And I, and my husband, Robert, trusts you totally to make the right decisions for the county. Because of your past record, I don't think I have anything to worry about, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And next, and to finish up, is Mr. Todd Palonel. Todd, if you'll come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Baker, Mr. Phillips. I don't know that I can talk for five minutes. I really, I'll get to what I was going to say, but there's a couple of things that I would like to say that Ms. MacLeod had just said, so just to kind of set a couple of things straight, just so that you know. The last thing she said that concerns me is, once they, you guys vote on this, if it gets sent to the representatives with a 5-0 vote, they're going to probably do what you ask them to do. And then it'll be in effect. It will happen at that time. There'll be still time before you start doing what you're doing, but it, that will change the form of government. So I just wanted to answer that. The next thing she mentioned, I believe that Vernon and I and the other board, when we were up here, had done the same thing, and I don't think, I don't think that's the case. I think what we were working on, Mr. Carmichael, was the Airport Authority and the IBA Board. And we were going to change the makeup of the board, and we did vote for a 5-0 vote to change it. to change it. And that was supposed to be sent up, and that did not happen. So we did not do that. So, just wanted to kind of clarify that, didn't want to leave that out there hanging. I do appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this morning very much. I'm glad that we as citizens have the opportunity to come to you, and I'm glad you have the opportunity to listen. So now I'll get on to my, what I was coming up here to say. All I wanted to say is this, I won't be back today at 2:00, but I would really like, I would really love, I would really think it would be a great thing if you guys would table this, give the citizens an opportunity to look over it some more, maybe give you an opportunity, if you haven't read it, to read it. If you have read it, read it again and again, and then maybe talk to a few folks and just make sure that this is the direction that you think you need to be leading the county in. There are a few concerns on there. I think Virginia did a great job of expressing some of those concerns, and I think there may even be a couple of concerns that some of you guys may have after you kind of take a second, third, fourth look at it. And just give it a little bit of time, and you've got time to do it at the next meeting in February and still get it down there for them to do what you'd like done. So, other than that, I do appreciate it. Again, I'd like to see you table it, let the citizens have a little bit more time and let you have a little bit more time to adjust some things. And I'll go sit down, and I hope you and everybody else will make it a great day in Paulding County. Thank you so much.
Thank you Todd. So thanks again for everyone participating and, you know, having the courage to come up and express your mind. That's what's great about this country, isn't it? Hopefully it'll stay that way. Under the consent agenda, we have several items, consideration of the following consent agenda items, which are, number three is to amend the 2022 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule and the 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting schedule for April of 2022. Number four is to approve the conveyance of the underground power easements to Georgia Power Company-owned county property along West Memorial Drive and South Main Street. And number five is to approve the acceptance of the streets listed below for perpetual maintenance by the county. And it's a part of Regency Park Phase III located in Post 1, which includes Lanier Court, Lenora Court, Imperial Court, and Royalty Lane. So this time, I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they would like to move any of the consent agenda items to new business for the 2:00 session.
Chairman, I believe that there's a number, there was a number five added.
Well, I don't have that copy, so I'll read it off the county attorney's. Number five is to adopt the Sheriff's Office updated pay scales. It's kind of important, huh? So I'll re-ask the question as far as moving it to new business. Are there any Commissioners that would like to have this on new business and discuss it further at that time? Or actually, further this morning. Hearing none, we'll leave it as a consent agenda item. And that completes the consent agenda. Old business, none, and new business is to discuss the action to adopt Resolution 22-05, a resolution requesting amendments to the Paulding County Form of Government. Our county attorney has spent a lot of time on this, and I know Mr. Phillips has some education to provide for us, and I've got a few things on my heart to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and I know that there are a lot of people in the audience today that have served in these roles up here, that have served Paulding County in other capacities, and that have been here a long time and have watched the county evolve over the years through good changes and some changes that may have been, may have had a lot of room for improvement. But what I want to talk today about is this resolution, in essence, it is a shifting of executive authority from the chairman to a county manager form of government. And in that regard, I want to go over some background, background, listening to what the speaker said today, and then hopefully I'll address most of those questions. And I don't want to, I don't want to, not intending to insult, insult anyone when I talk about the three forms of government, just making sure everybody paid attention in their high school civics class. But remember, in our system of government, we have three branches. We have the judicial branch, which is not what we're talking about today. We have a legislative branch, that's the entity that makes the laws, makes the policies. They're the ones that weigh the pros and cons and take a government in a certain direction. The federal level, it's the Congress, the state, it's the General Assembly, and here in Paulding County, your legislative branch are the five elected commissioners that are sitting before you. The third branch of government is the executive branch, that they are charged with the duty of executing, putting into place what the legislative branch has passed and approved, and sometimes what the judicial system orders. But the executive branch, their job is to carry it out. At the county level, the entities that county out, that carry out government on a daily basis are your offices and departments, your DOT, your water. They're the doers where the rubber meets the road. They carry out the directives of this body in getting the job done. As it stands right now, the executive authority, the chief executive officer for Paulding County is the Paulding County Chairman. So when you think about it, the chair position actually holds two hats. There's a legislative hat, and then there's an executive hat. The purpose of this legislation is to take, this resolution is to take the executive functions, take them away from the chair, leave his legislative function, and put it in a county manager form of government. To give a little background, in 1999, the position of county administrator was created by the Board of Commissioners. County administrators, that's what they called it. Statutorily, the General Assembly had created a position called county manager. And the state law says that the Board of Commissioners can put as much or as little authority into that position as the Board of Commissioners desires. In 1999, the county manager position was created, and in that resolution, it was termed county administrator, because the county administrator position did not carry the executive power that remained with the chairman. In 1999, the county budget was the total budget, I'll get with Tabitha on how budgets fall out, but the total budget about that time was somewhere in the low $40 million. Here, in this budget year, the total budget is about $191 million. County population at 1999, at the time the county administrator position was created, was 81,000 people. Per the 2020 census, Paulding County is showing 168,000 people. So you can see, obviously, the county has grown, those numbers back that up. And so I have been asked to propose a resolution, to draft a resolution, which changed, changes that form of government, transferring the executive power to a county manager role. Getting down to brass tacks of what the resolution says, the chairman, while no longer, no longer serving as the chief executive officer, the chairman would continue to be elected countywide. The chairman would preside over Board of Commissioners' meetings. The chairman would nominate the direct reports, those direct reports are the county attorney, the county manager, the finance director, and the county clerk. And the county chairman would continue to nominate department heads. All of those positions are subject to the confirmation by the majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. The chairman would execute legal documents on behalf of the city, or excuse me, on behalf of the county as authorized by the Board of Commissioners. The chairman would represent the county at ceremonial functions, and the chairman would continue to have full voting power. Removed from the chairman's day-to-day executive functions and being transferred to a county manager are the duty to execute the resolutions and the ordinances of the Board of Commissioners. Departments, department heads would directly report to the county manager. The county manager would now oversee, hire, and remove all employees below the level of department head. The county manager would now have the obligation to prepare a Board of Commissioners' agenda for all of these meetings with the input of the other commissioners and the chair. The county manager would be responsible for preparing a proposed budget. That budget would ultimately be approved by the Board of Commissioners. And in his role, or her role, as a chief executive officer, that officer would have spending authority up to $50,000, consistent with the purchasing manual of the county and consisting with some other restrictions that require expenditures over $10,000 to be notified to the remaining commissioners. Well, in this case, that's how the chairman functions now, that role will be transferred over to the county manager. So expenditures over $10,000, this body would get notification of. I want to highlight something that's very important with this. I have seen through communications that have been sent to me, there is concern that there is too much authority being placed into an appointed position. There is a lot of authority that would be placed into an appointed position, that is certainly true. However, as Ms. Galloway pointed out, you must remember that this body has the authority to terminate the county manager by a majority vote at any time. The county manager is basically serving at the will of the Board of Commissioners, and if they will that that change happen, then that change will happen by a 3-2 vote at any time. So that's the remedy in the event you have a county manager that is either abusing their authority, or exceeding their authority, or simply doing a poor job in the performance of the county manager's role. On the flip side, the way it currently sits, if you have a chairman, and this is not directed to our current chairman, but the Commissioners asked me to put something together looking forward into the future. If your chairman abuses his power, mismanages his power, or the rest of the commission is simply dissatisfied as to how the chairman is executing his executive powers, this board has no tool to change that. The tool that exists is with the voters every four years to vote in a new chairman if you're dissatisfied with how he is functioning in his executive capacity. This form of executive county manager government, just to give you an idea, and you cannot lump them all together because every county of the 159 counties is different. DeKalb's different, they've got an elected CEO, that's not what we're proposing here. We're proposing an appointed county manager CEO. Currently in place, based on my research, the following counties use this model, Cherokee County, Forsyth County, Cobb County, Coweta County, Floyd County, Hall County, and there are others. They all have little variations, none of them are exactly the same, but the model that is proposed here generally follows the models that are in place there. Should this resolution pass, as Mr. Tully, Mr. Tully said, "This type of decision is above the normal day-to-day operations of the Board of Commissioners." He's exactly right, because this type of change changes the form of this government, removes executive authority from the chairman's position. If this resolution is passed, it then has to go to the General Assembly. The General Assembly then has the freedom to not do anything with it, enact it as is, or change it and enact something that's a variation of what the county proposed. But that authority rests solely in the General Assembly, and that's what would happen in the event this resolution is passed. I want to take just a minute here and try to address some of the points that were raised. Mr. Taylor asked a question, what is a CEO? What really, he says, "We know what they are." Practically what it means, it's the person who carries out the duties of this government on a day-to-day basis. The chairman's role currently, he's got, he's got a lot of responsibilities, both legislative and executive. This would free the chairman up to solely focus on the legislative and policymaking side. Last thing I wanted to say, Ms. McLeod mentioned, in her research, she found a lot of governments that used a county manager form, others that used a county administrator form. Be careful in looking at governmental forms. You cannot categorize everybody as a county manager. They may have a title that's county manager, but that county manager may have no executive authority, alright? You've got to look at their enabling legislation to find out truly how it functions. The six I mentioned are close to this model, not exact. You may have some county managers that have no executive power, and you may have some county administrators that have full executive power. You've just got to be careful about characterizing them, because you've got to look under the hood to see how it actually works. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Jason, I like to see a lot of these questions that were brought up today be answered while you're on a roll here. Also, I think Mr. Taylor had some concerns about the cost. Is there any proposed cost to this change in government at this time?
There is nothing in the proposed resolution that addresses any issue of cost. We do have an existing county administrator position, which is fully funded. How budgeting ultimately happens is up to this body, not a legal issue. We know that different governments cost differently, but that is not the subject of the current resolution.
When we talk about transparency, I don't know if it's an opinion or if you can state this as a fact, but when we talk about transparency, I see this, when I read it, as something that promotes transparency. Do you read that into that from a legal aspect?
Yes, there's nothing in the resolution that would foster any element of not spelling out to the public exactly what the intentions are. One of the things that I like to do, and I drafted this resolution, is I like to draft them consistent with how the General Assembly drafts them. Line through the stuff that's getting removed, underline the stuff that's getting added so that somebody reading it can see clearly what's spelled out in the words that are being utilized.
So Jason, as far as comparing it to, say, a business the size of this county, I mean, you know, we have, what, 1,000 employees, give or take 100 or so, I don't know. But comparing it to how a business runs its operations day-to-day, most of them have CEOs, bank boards have CEOs, they, some of that, they sit on board appointed positions to carry out the duties. So for me, I have to sit back and then I look and see how I run my own company that's been successful, that I think, feeds my family very well. So then I look back and I say, well, I don't have a board, but I am the board. And I have a person in place that executes my policy that I put in place, and if he doesn't do what I say, he's out the door. So I, I look at things very simple, and maybe, you know, just make sure I'm not looking at this differently, but, so comparable to, even the school board in this county runs it the same way. For the most part, it's a superintendent, it's not called a CEO. So, you know, so I've had some, I've just tried to look out and see what other people do myself, where I not just take words for it. So, but it all pulls back to what I do and how I run my own business that has been successful under this, my own model. successful under this, my own model. So am I missing something different than the majority's businesses that run this size of, compared to our government with a CEO and a, a business of this size with a CEO? Is there much difference there?
Commissioner Stover, I, I, I think that this model, not exactly, but it definitely tracks your major corporations in the United States. If you use that model, you have a board of directors with your corporations. Those, that board of directors sets the direction and the agenda for the organization. The CEO of the organization then carries out what the board of directors directs. That's why they're the directors. You've got a CEO, that would be your county manager. Your CFO, or your chief financial officer of a corporation, we've got a comptroller, finance director. Clearly, the model at the large corporate level is generally consistent with the proposal here.
All right, so, and the next part's not a question, it's more of a statement. So it took me years of growing, from the time I was 19 to 45 now, of growing my business. And one of the best things that I ever done in my business was let go and not try to do every single thing, is I found people in my business who could help me grow and have the same mindset. I was bogged down in my business because I was trying to do everything. So if you look at the size of government that we have now, we, we ask what the chairman's role is, and, and, and is he supposed to be executing and making policy and being the face of this county and doing every single thing? You can't, it is such of a size of a county that we are now. Back in 1999, it was a lot different story than it is in 2022, unfortunately. I've been here my whole life. I wish we had more dirt roads to ride around on, but we don't. So, you know, I, I'd like to go back to them days, but we, we're far past them. And just, just everybody would keep an open mind, please, keep an open mind, that we're not trying to do anything wrong here, we're not trying to pull anything behind your back and do anything that's not being done in today's times now by major corporations. And one of the things that I ran on, and everybody said, is you need to bring business sense into this county. And we are doing that. I mean, we have business people and other occupations and stuff like that, and every one of us care about this county. And, and we, we would not do anything, especially the transparency and stuff like that. We go by what we have to do, and, and we don't know who to reach out to or when to reach out all the time, you know? I mean, we vote on, you know, just issues, and we spend a lot of money, and, you know, we don't really hear about things until it comes down to something like that. So we may not always know what to reach out and talk to y'all about, but we have 180,000 people in this county. It would take a long time to call everybody also. So just re, please, reach out to us if you have questions on Friday after, on Friday when the agenda's put out, reach out to us and talk to us. Because I don't do Facebook, so anybody that puts me out there and says something about me and don't, and asks why I don't respond, I don't do Facebook, because you can ask those people in this room that I picked up the phone and I called them. Instead of being put on Facebook that we're idiots. So, so there again, you got to think, while we may do some of the stuff that we do, because we don't want to go through that stuff such as that, when all you got to do is just pick up the phone and call us, because I do the same thing. So, anyway, thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing, and then I'll, I'll let you, let the rest of the guys have it, but, you know, he brought up an interesting point. You know, we talk about the CFO. You guys got to see what Tabitha does. Tabitha lives this stuff. Wouldn't it be a travesty if we elected our CFO? If you guys tried to elect somebody to take over Tabitha, I think I, I think I'd want to leg wrestle you or something to the ground, but she's perfect at what she does. When you talk about putting specialized people to specialized fields, you get a better product. If you can't see that, I'm sorry, I really am. I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, because we didn't take this lightly. People are acting like this happened overnight, something we've talked about from the day we walked in here. We don't drive a vehicle, you know, looking at what is running up under our tire. We look out in front of the car. This whole board has been very proactive and has tried to really, tried to just analyze things. Of course, you know you can't do it all at one time, but we've analyzed things, and we've rolled these things back and forth, and we've put them in the, in the hands of subject, subject matter experts that have talked to us and coached us and given us advice over the years. Guys, I want you to know, the people who called me this week, I, I, a lot of them, I really do, I, I, I take your, your words and I, and I mull them over because I respect you people, I really do. And I respect the people who came up here to talk today. I think what we've got here is a difference of opinion, but I also think that this thing had gotten blown up into something that it wasn't actually. And I, and it, it really kind of, it, it almost, I'm like Brian, it almost hurts you a little bit, because for three years, it's been very uneventful around here. You guys hadn't had a whole lot to come up here and, and talk to us about because it has run so well. And, and it's not because of us. We stand up here and, and we, and we do what we need to do, but sometimes it's in spite of us, because we let these people do what they need to do. We give them the tools, and that's our job as the board, is to give these people who run this county, which are, are the department heads, we give them the tools to do their job, and we let them do their job. But I just hope, I hope no matter what the decision is today, that you guys know that everything that's been said here, we take it serious and we're taking note to it. Thank you.
I'd like to kind of echo what Brian said. As far as the day-to-day operational piece of running a business, I wouldn't be able to serve as a commissioner if I didn't have the right people in place. That's just the nuts and bolts of how business works. And it's, it's, as a business owner, it's incumbent upon me to put the right people in place to make those right daily decisions. And we take that serious as a Board of Commissioners up here. If this thing passes and a county manager's in place, it's our job to be sure it's the right person and they're held accountable to do their job. That's not something that we would take lightly. So I appreciate your comments, Brian. I, I agree with you on that. Jason, if I could ask a question, Ms. Galloway made a comment that she's concerned that this was sprung on the public. I haven't seen a whole lot of, like Chuck was saying, a whole lot active in the last three years. Has this been handled any differently than any other agenda items?
No, this is, let me, let me clarify one thing. This has been handled as all agenda items that don't, that are not required by law to have public hearings. There are certain agenda items, zoning and some millage rate items, and others that are required to have an advanced public hearing by law. This doesn't fall into that category, so that, that would be my answer to that. And let, let me say this, too. This is not an agenda item that was simply submitted to the agenda sometime yesterday afternoon either, or, or this morning. I know that we've all seen that happen from time to time. Hopefully, that happens only in those true emergency situations. This is not an emergency situation, so certainly didn't fall into that category.
Thank you, Jason. Also, I'd like to, I don't do Facebook either. It's just not something I do. Therefore, I have spent the last three days on the telephone. I don't mind doing it, but this is my Facebook. Face-to-face interaction is my Facebook, and that's important to me. November the 3rd, 2020, I was very fortunate to receive 15,289 votes. I see about five or six people here that have spoken. I know, I believe Mr. Tully may live in my post in my district. That's the only one I believe lives in my district. Most of the other interactions I've had are people that trust me to make the decision up here. That's what happened on November the 3rd, I was elected to be here, to make a choice, make a decision, to represent those 15,000 people, and that's what I'm here to do. I don't do social media. I apologize if anyone takes that the wrong way. I've gotten several phone calls and interactions from several people that have tried to respond to some of the Facebook interactions. Y'all are taking their posts down. That's inappropriate. That doesn't give them people the right to speak. And I like to think that I'm the voice of the person that can't be here today. I like to think that I'm the voice of the person that is out having to work to deal with these financial situations that we're dealing with, because elected officials make bad choices. We're living in a time where the cost of gas is almost triple what it was a year ago. Groceries are going up every day. These people don't have a choice to be here. So I'm proud that I'm here. This is what I'm supposed to be doing. I will vote with my heart and represent them 15,000 people. I hope I do the right thing. If I don't, I'm happy to step down, step aside, and let somebody else have a go at it. Thank you.
Well, I guess it's my turn. I just want to say thank you for everybody that's come to listen to us. We've listened to y'all. Just trust us, that's, you elected us, trust us to do our job. And I know you guys, I'm on Facebook. I'm probably the only one on Facebook, but don't go talking about us on Facebook. That, I mean, that is rude. Talk to our face, call us. I know that there were a couple people said that we don't return our phone calls. I've returned every phone call that I've gotten, and so has everybody else, because we've all talked to the same people over and over again. I've responded to emails, and we won't stop doing that, but man, don't put us on Facebook like that. Thank you.
I appreciate so much y'all being here. I started out saying that, and after our time together here, even underscore it more so. We value our staff immensely, and we don't do anything without our senior staff person, which is now called a county administrator, see how the vote goes, whether we change it or not. But all these other staff members in the room is where, as already been said, but where, where there are go-to people to make decisions, because they are the experts. And, you know, maybe some, some people would want to poo-poo that I use teamwork so much, but we wouldn't be where we are if we didn't work together as a team. And I hope you can see by listening to my fellow commissioners and our county attorney that I am blessed. I am blessed to, to be able to chair this kind of quality people with different backgrounds and, and who love their county. And I, I really can't follow to their clarity and to their hearts, anything different. I, I would like to add a couple of things that I wrote down previously. This is Resolution 2205. There was one, two, three, four, those resolutions, we're already done this year. It's been crickets about those, but, you know, that, that's no problem. This is the one that concerns people, and that's why, again, I'm grateful that you're in here. The, I've been on the phone a lot, too. I've been on the phone with the ACCG, that's Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, Executive Director Dave Wills, because he goes to all the counties on a regular basis, cycles around to them. I've read the Pauline County enabling legislation that Jason mentioned is, is really what governs us, and previous boards developed the enabling legislation, along with state delegates, I guess can confirm that. And I've discussed, you know, each person on the board here, we've talked for hours. So there's been a lot of dialogue on this over the weekend, because we, we care about your all's input and that you all are able to get the facts. The, the thing that was mentioned as a lie is that if we, if we have a county manager that does something, then the Board of Commissioners would say, "It's not on us, it's on the county manager." That is a lie. It's on us. It's on us. Whatever any of these department heads or senior staff do, it's on us, and we are accountable. I think, I think Carol mentioned 71 of 159 counties. Usually, it's the larger counties. Jason read several of them that are, you know, very close in their size and budget to us. Transferring more of the day-to-day, I think it was my friend here Chuck on the left who, who said I had a lot of other things to do. Quite honestly, there are things that get neglected for this county because I spend too much time in the day-to-day. I was called last spring on the ACCG Finance Revenue Committee to be the chairman of that committee. It's one of nine committees in the state. And I took it, but I haven't been, I haven't done a very good job with it, because I haven't spent enough time with it. The Health Department, I'm supposed to be involved there. Constitutionally, I'm on the Industrial Building Authority, the Pauline County Airport Authority. The Northwest Georgia Regional Commission is something that I need to take more part in. The Chamber of Commerce, ex officio member. The City of Harem, I don't get together with the mayor and their city council nearly enough, nearly enough. And likewise, with the City of Dallas. Those are things that the chairman needs to be doing. The attendance at the Board of Education. Sometimes, John, I'm too tired, I just want to go home, spend time with the wife, but I, I, I should be there. The collaboration with state delegates, our representatives that are, I think they're in session today, not today, not tomorrow, but getting with them and communicating what I think the citizens want as changes to, to the state laws is something that's important. We need to have more town halls. We've not done some because of the pandemic, but more, more work on the website, putting more information in there for you. There are other multiple boards that it sure is nice when the chairman might show up and show support. The Elections Board, the Tax Assessors Board, the Water and Sewer Advisory Board. There's something, multiple things every day, and to be able to unload some of those executive things will, will be good for this chairman and the next chairman and the one after, I think, unless they're chairman that just want to wield their power in some way, and that's not me. Lot of speaking requests. So it's, I'm very happy today to have had this much public participation. I thank you again for, for being here. Some people have, these things aren't necessarily in any good order, that some people have said, "Well, why didn't you have a public hearing?" Jason kind of covered that. If we're going to do something with the millage rate, or the budget, or zoning, and a couple other things, yeah, we got to have a public hearing by state law. But this was just an agenda item that I'm glad we've been able to cover more thoroughly. And there's also one more thing that actually was given to me by a previous chairman who said that, "Once you go this direction, you can't undo it, you can't go back." Dave Wills told me on the phone yesterday, he said that was true back at the turn of the century through something called local constitutional amendment, but now, if we change today and a year from now, want to change back and redefine the responsibilities, that's totally acceptable.
Your five minutes is up.
So we, we want to hear from you all, and just reiterating what some of my comrades here have said, and if anybody's got a pen and paper, I'll give you my cell number. I don't take it in the shower, or if I'm playing with my grandkids, so. 404-326-6061. Is that allowed? All right. 404-3, you know my number, Tim. So where are we on this agenda? We have, that's the conclusion of a regular business. No one is speaking on non-agenda items, and at this time, we've got a little tradition where if any of the commissioners want to make an announcement or celebrate something, want to make an announcement or celebrate something, they do so, so. One thing I would like to announce, and I know from the admin side, new department heads, tell me if one of your people gets a degree, because one person in admin, Ms. Felicia Wommack, who's a county administrator for Scott and Frank, just received her associate, associate degree in business technology. So I'd like to celebrate that, and y'all say something, and then I've got one more.
Dave, I'd like to announce, for the Paulding County Comprehensive Transportation Plan and Comprehensive Plan Update, come help Paulding County prepare for the future. Join us for our first public meeting on February the 15th, 2022, from 5:00 to 7:00. And I do believe it's at the Events Place in Hiram, is that correct, George? So please, you know, if you've got any comments or concerns of what's going on in county with transportation and want to help put some input, please show up. Thank you.
I'm all talked out.
You went over your files.
I'm all, just want to thank Brian. Yesterday, again, we're back to another Facebook issue is what I'm going to call it. There's been a lot of, a lot of awful information put out there about the, the senior center. Last, I guess Thursday, Friday, I started getting several phone calls. Brian and I, Brian called me, Brian said, hey, man, I'm getting some phone calls, how about you? I said, yeah, I actually have gotten a couple of calls. I immediately picked up the phone, called Frank Baker, I said, get Michael Justice and Brian and I are going to set up a meeting, go sit down with the seniors. Yesterday morning, with Frank's help and Michael Justice, who's over, he's our Parks and Rec Director, Brian and I went and sat down with a room full of seniors to calm their nerves, to put the facts out there. And by the time we left, I had more hugs and kisses on the cheek than I could handle, and I, it was one of the best things I've done since I've been up here, and I enjoyed the day. I appreciate Brian's time. I mean, Brian and I, and these other commissioners, spend a lot of time in our normal days to make those things happen, and I appreciate you guys for doing that, thank you, Brian, appreciate that. Appreciate you, Frank, yesterday, he, he ran the lead with that, really, he's the one that, he's the data guy, had all the facts to explain to them. Brian and I, just the elected officials up there, I told them I was going to walk in with a bulletproof vest because they was ready to hang us, but, but thank goodness, I'm hoping I can get a quilt by the time it's over with, but we'll see, so, thank you guys.
All right, I'm going to start something called Fun Facts that may relate to somebody sitting near or somebody out here in front of me. So something that you probably don't know, but I think it's pretty neat, and some of you in the room probably share this characteristic that you weren't, when you were born, you weren't just born by yourself, you had another person there with you, a twin. So one of our commissioners is a twin. Everybody know that? No? Well, isn't that fun? All right, we have reason to go into executive session for litigation, and I'll ask for a motion to approve that.
Make a motion, we go into session for potential impending litigation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover, all those in favor, say aye. All right, I call the regular session back to order and ask for any, any motions or other business.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add as new business authorization for the county to participate in two nationwide settlement agreements regarding opioid litigation. One against pharmaceutical distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and Amerisource Bergen, and the other against manufacturer Janssen Pharmaceuticals, following the lead of the State of Georgia and authorizing the chairman and the county attorney to execute all documentation related thereto.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hart, that was...
Stover.
That's Stover.
That was a compliment.
And you got who made the motion, so any discussion? That's just to put it on the agenda this afternoon, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Kiri's 5-0 and motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stover, we're adjourned.